There was some more violations that weren't added by the public enforcement.
That were not?
There were, there could have been some more. The fence, that's not a past violation, but they didn't write a new violation, I'm not sure why. I went out there the next day to TJ, but I didn't want them to start shuffling and turning around, I wanted to really see what the deal was. So, you know, you can't really, everything is kinda locked up with those, with the fence and. Then somebody told me this morning, because I went back there this morning, and somebody said be careful because there's pitfalls on the property and so, you know, I, I didn't.
You didn't get out of the car?
With TJ, I did get out of the car and I had.
You let him walk around?
No, I did, right, I did have protection with me, so I don't ever get, I brought that dog spray from the post office and everything. So, I'll say I'm a fireman with it, so, I don't care, you know, I mean, I, I was afraid of like booby traps, who knows, these people crazy? With these pot farms and shit like that, so, so, I didn't see any dogs and hear any dogs, nobody was home when we went the next day. Uh, did we knock on the door? No, we didn't, but we figured if we were moseying around the property, somebody would know. So the neighbors knew, they saw us there, and one of the neighbors came out today and showed me his letter. So his letter had no name on it, but it had his address on it. So all these letters, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, were sent out with their address. So that they got the letter, but there was no name on the letter, it just said occupant or maybe, I think his was blank, it just had the address on it.
Just to be clear, what, what you mean, it wasn't addressed to the neighbors?
It was addressed to the address.
Okay, but not the.
Not the person.
Okay, and is it required that it's, that it's addressed to the person?
I would, no, just ask, go to the address.
At least sign the address.
But all. It's just a little weird, because normally they, you know, put the name, and it's, it's a lot easier to just check it off and.
All of his receipts came back, he, he has all his receipts, uncertified, but he didn't write their name or address on any of the receipts. So I got a phone call this morning, asking if that would be acceptable. And if, I said, well, what if it's not? And they said, well, then he'd be on next month's agenda. And that could be the reason why that was done, I don't know, I'm not saying it was done, but we called a special meeting for today. And don't see it, making anybody come here for nothing, just to, so, I said, no, I'm fine with it, I, I care, what I'm gonna do is. We'll see how many people from the public come, I'm gonna ask them, did you receive a letter? I told this guy I met this morning. Bring your letter, he also didn't send the application to the people, he just wrote a letter about coming to a meeting tonight. You, you have the letter, right? Are there any challenges?
Well, the receipts only give him, uh, uh, I guess the authority to speak to us and as. It doesn't grant him anything, no.
But he could have sent those certificates to anybody, he could have also just gone to the postal, he did send them out. Because I saw one of them, but he could have just went to the grain store, took certified receipts and said, yeah, these are them, there's no names, there's no. I didn't even know, is there a stamp on the receipts that they were handed in?
Yes, so some have a red stamp and then some have their digital, their digitally printed with the date.
But there were twelve of them sent out, we'll see if twelve people are asking if they got the letters, if they got the letters. I mean, I'm, 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 we're going, I'm going all with this. The guy is not a good neighbor.
Well.
My opinion, between the noise and the neighbors upset.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an active, active farm, like, yeah.
Like three, three hundred percent increase and, I mean, it's certainly substantial.
And it's an active farm, I mean, if it was a garden that was making noise, that's one thing, but they're selling the product, it's being grown.
Yeah, and they're licensed to do the, no. All right, they're licensed to do combination cultivation, dry cherries, storage, packaging and waste processing, I don't know if that's nice.
He didn't do it for the, it should have been dormitory, waste window, maybe, maybe the water, it might run off.
Did you look beyond the fence and see the plants or the pots?
I didn't.
Because if they're in pots, it's an easy move.
Right, it's true. Yeah.
From what I was told, they're in bags, not pots, they're in sacks, like burlap, yeah. That's what I was told, or that's also an easy move. It's not like you have to rip the roots out of the ground. Problem is, let's say he gets denied tonight, let's just say that, right? What's the timeframe of them having to? The business? Like what's the timeframe?
I would know the answer up to that in the head on that. No, Tyler's.
If he gets denied tonight, how fast does he have to make it?
Because he, he needs August to finish his grow time.
I mean, he, in theory, should stop doing what he's doing against the code, I mean, instantly, so, I mean, that would be grounds for a violation. So like, you know, tomorrow would be the first day on that front, if, if there is.
But we could be bad guy, good guy, deny it and give him till August thirty.
I wouldn't give him till August thirty. That's the end, that's the reason we made this meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be more of a, a vote decision.
Done, August thirtieth, he's taking his crop.
I believe he's done now, because it's May, June, July, his grow season.
Yeah, we had a shooting bay, kind of shooting down.
But the way it works, typically, they get a notice of violation and that gives them thirty days to remedy. So if they got it tomorrow, that would give them the thirty, thirty days anyway, in theory, and then at that point, if they don't remedy. Um, they would do the ticket and then send it to court.
So he's got one day away, okay. Well, we can stop it if that's, if they, if we decide to vote that, I'm just saying. And then on Saturday, that's.
I would just make sure, you know, obviously, to run through the factors for the area there, just to, to build the record.
Do we have a warrant?
Yep. Just need three.
And the guy.
Yeah.
That's helpful, the applicant is helpful.
I don't show, well, I'm hoping the neighbor show, I would have to show up. I'm gonna let him speak again, I don't have any problem with that, maybe you can.
The one guy said this morning when he came to build the monument, he, and then another guy would come.
From the applicant? What are you coming for?
Trying to verify these mails, and then he brought in the return, he brought in the, a, a returned, um, letter that didn't get mailed, oh, it got mailed, but it got returned. Like the person didn't accept or was along that, like, whatever, and then, we're just trying to verify. The letter that he sent, so, the exact letter, he said that, he gave us a copy, just so we can verify where the mail went.
That's just a Godfather Three quote?
That's right.
I tried to get out and they pulled me back.
Oh, my wife walked into the cabin when it closed.
But that's, that's my Silvio Dante from The Sopranos, doing my quote from Godfather Three.
Are we just, are we done discussing this right now?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just gonna pause and recording.
I have one more thing about this thing, if there's any chance that the guy was telling the truth when he said that the Office of Cannabis Management. Was telling him where in Fallsburg he should be growing, that's just an interesting thing to note, do you remember at the last meeting, he said that?
Yeah, that is, because I've never, I mean, I know people that are in the industry and I, typically, you tell them where you wanna be and then they. Give you a permit or they don't, um, I mean, that's just my understanding, I mean, I, I haven't studied it at great depth or legally handled it, but.
Yeah, it took me a while to find, I just wanted to know if his, his lease was even, and it is, it's up to, in, uh, was it March twenty-sixth?
His lease?
His, uh, contract, you know, his license.
Oh, that's correct. What is the magic year?
What is his option?
Twenty-four.
But if we, uh, deny him, what's, what is, what are his options?
So the first one would be filing Article seventy-eight proceeding against the board, um, and litigate it. Um, the other option would be if he is at the end of the season, he could just simply move his operation somewhere else, um, that fits zoning. Um, and I guess the third option would be to retire, um, or just not, not operate anymore.
Bunch of guys with little, uh, pot farming places all over the place.
Yeah, I mean, that's, at the end of the day, it's, I imagine there's gotta be a process with OCM where you can move it to somewhere that has sufficient acreage or where it fits into zoning.
And that was strange to me, that, uh, it's not a big plot of land.
No.
Clearly residential, you know, there's no.
Very residential, so the guy next door has a beautiful house.
Right, and a nicely kept lawn and everything.
That's the guy that wouldn't shut up, Larry, sorry Larry, but you don't shut up. He didn't shut up today. Thank God it was raining. Is that the applicant? How's everyone doing? We're the only ones on the topic, correct?
Oh, boy, yeah.
Oh, no, you're the only one, this is just for you. This is special. Are we done? Welcome to the town of Fall, but it's only boarding. Rob, well, we did this last week, I motioned to accept the minutes.
You didn't have any minutes.
You didn't get the minutes from last month, but you didn't get.
I didn't see you.
So we won't vote on making a motion, I don't know.
Okay, so, um. Burnbridge Road, so I'm, I'm gonna let you guys present your case again, even though we did that last two weeks ago. You have anything new to tell us, I wanna be fair about that, step up, state your names for the record.
My name's James Roll.
Tell us what you did, what you wanna do, is there anything new from last one?
Yeah, I think so, I just think, uh, a lot has transpired, and I think there's a lot misunderstood about why I'm here. And why I'm involved with Ziz, and, uh, I think the neighbors and the city, we're gonna, really, uh, I think you wouldn't wanna hear. You know, we're characterized as pot farmers, like we're wheeling dime bags onto the house, that's not the case here, and it's a very personal story for me. And I've owned several businesses, I don't really need this business, but it's a bigger reason why I'm here, and I'd like to lose me if I could. So I got about five minutes to prepare remarks, is it okay if I read them?
Yeah, it should, that, sorry, sorry. I don't even, but really, we're supposed to be recording this meeting if you are.
No, no, it's not true.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it's okay, well, good evening, everyone. I want to first start by addressing all the personal attacks to the word directed at me. For what I describe, characterize as hatred directed at me, the Fosses and cannabis in general. I am a native New England born, raised in Rhode Island, the son of a decorated Master Chief, a gold Master Chief, for those who served, you would know what that is. Means that thirty years of service, service, he did not receive one department, was able to get gold bars instead of red. He also served as a commander of sub-vets after he retired, that's who raised me, the Master Chief. I don't lie for anyone or anything, and I don't need to peddle in hatred, I don't hate anyone. My word is my bond, so the accusations curled in my direction last time are unfounded, and I have the proof to show that they were. Such as, we planted already, we did not, I can show you that, that our property is not distressed in the backyard, there is a trench, I got things of that, and I'm sure Bucky will admit to it also. Anyways, I'm also an MIT grad, I have two degrees, one in engineering and one in economics. I'm a thirty-year general contractor and developer, I own a consulting company, I also own a green energy company since two thousand and five. Done nothing to lose money, but I feel we always have to do our part, help the environment. I'm an expert on environmental issues, and also an expert on land use and its conscientious use of it to live harmoniously with the environment, that's who I am. That's why I'm here, because I know about land development and environmental issues. What I was taught at MIT is to research, learn the facts and learn what's going on before I speak. But from my father, I learned if you wanna be part of something, you should learn a history of it. Since I'm a member of the Fallsburg community now, I research and I learn the entire history of Fallsburg. I also studied the zoning regulations to bring me up to speed on what's going on. First of all, Fallsburg is an agricultural community, since seventeen fifty. Later became a big Jewish community who started out as farmers, but diversified and made it a nice resort area, brought in a big tourist industry, but they also helped the farming. Point is, Fallsburg has always been a pro-farming community, even before Americans stood foot here, and has always been for the farmer and the diversification of crops. But we as legal cannabis growers are continuing that history and should be afforded all the protections that are specifically written into the zoning laws. It's written into the zoning district laws intent, which clearly says the intent is to preserve wide open spaces and the right to farm. Those are the two directives, and since we are not in an area where no wide open spaces will be at risk. We are in an agricultural zone, then we are the exact case to be afforded a variance from the basic guideline set forth in three ten dot two point five. As far as cannabis and the stigmatization that has been tried to be put on us as pot farmers. And I remind you that the state of New York approved and licensed us to grow in Fallsburg's agricultural zones, but it's much more than that, this is where it gets personal. This has to do with the time we live in, and we live in a massive opioid crisis, this is why I'm part on a Ziz. My nephew got hooked on opioids, put my family in great turmoil, like many other families across our great nation. So I studied, like I was back at MIT, I studied the addiction, I found out that cannabis, CBD and THC could be used as a substitute. Instead of OxyContin, Oxycodone, Percocet, Dorcet, and all the other opioids the big pharma pushes onto our vets and make easily available to all of our children's hands. It should hit home over here, because I found out the CAT skills happen to be ground zero for the opioid crisis in New York. And we are part of the solution to help this crisis, not the problem. Cannabis is God's plant for both physical and mental trauma, not the stuff big pharma pushes on our citizenry. Can we do it ourselves? No, but the Master Chief always taught me, think globally, act locally, that's exactly what we're doing, and that's why I got into Ziz. So if you wanna complain about the opioid problem, it's not the pot farmer, the pot farmer's trying to help, who else is going to do something about it? At least I'm trying, now I'll address the concern of the neighbors, we plant pots, we plant in pots, that means whatever goes in the pot stays in the pot. It doesn't leak into the water, but I tell you all what, lawn fertilizers and any other chemicals put into the soil to kill weeds or grow your grass, green or fasten. When you live on a mountain, you don't need to go to MIT to know your water travels downhill. And as a new member of the Fallsburg community, with the expertise in this area and having residence at a high elevation with well water. I would suggest any fertilizers, weed killers, and greener grass products, or any Monsanto product, be banned, because they surely will end up in your well water. Any use of those aforementioned products that are on mountainside or high elevation to me should be a criminal act. To address the claim of my property, I said my property is distressed, and somebody challenged me, well, I bring proof, our neighbor, Bucky, had a higher elevation than us. Boy take out his word, was there before he bought the property, has a trench and a protected wetland behind his property that terminates right out our property. So all the water from his yard goes into that trench, collects and runs right into my backyard, I take man's word, it was there before, but it is there. I told him that, what is flooding my lawn, and he suggested I continue the trench to the next neighbor, and I said, I can't do that. That'll be a criminal act, you can't put a shovel in a protected area, and I would not do that, and here is the proof, I have the pictures. We don't just plant in pots because we want to, but we have to because of that trench. I also think the shit, city should oversee the filling of that trench, since nobody should be allowed in there. Everything we put in the pot is approved by the OCM to be organic and safe for groundwater. It doesn't matter for us, because it all goes in the pot, but that's, we are tested, they come and test, but no one else here is tested to my knowledge. And to the man who says my lawn is too high, well, because I've been cutting grass since I was twelve years old, and I thought maybe a week and a half, maybe two weeks. My grass goes six inches in four days, but what I suspect is the runoff from my neighbor at the high elevation. Who clearly has the best, most well-maintained lawn on the street, kudos to him, it looks great. Um, that's really good stuff for grass, guess what, it's really bad for your water. So if you got a problem with your well water, those types of lawn products would be where you need to look. And suggest comprehensive testing before the well water becomes contaminated, you'll become a hinkling from the movie Everett Rockfish. There's already a five billion dollar lawsuit for the stuff they sell, which is readily available at Home Depot, by the way, by the way. And what it does to the water, so I hope the pot farmer, like me, and our actual experience and knowledge of environmental issues and concern for those issues helps everyone in the room. I'm speaking facts, not conjecture, I can elaborate even more, but I think I've said enough to make you think about it, and we'll take, uh. To preserve the great Fallsburg drinking water, which I, you know, come from Miami, we don't drink tap water, here it's great. Finally, I am a man of God, and I cannot let what happened after this meeting go unchecked. The Fosses, who own, my principal owners of Zizzle, are Jewish, first and second generation Jews, Kohain Jews, run out of Europe. In hatred and antisemitism, what I experienced last time here after this meeting was pretty brutal, I'll just say that. Any man or woman that would have that much hatred in their heart is certainly not with God, in my view. This country is founded on God, his divine principles of tolerance, acceptance, and to honor thy neighbors. And when I first came here, I went to Bucky, my next door neighbor, and I said, I know there was problems here with whoever was here before. I said, there's a new sheriff in town, he'll tolerate any of that, and I was willing to go to every neighbor, give him my personal number, any problem at all, come to me. Talk to me and I will deal with it, right? Because I wanna be a good neighbor, that's the way I was raised, that's where I was brought up. I think that for everything Fallsburg stands for, which is a great community and its history, to try to do something about this damn opioid crisis. Think globally, act locally, right? And in the process, maybe give some insight on how to protect the groundwater, I ask for your blessings for this minor variance, I also ask for the blessings of our neighbors. I promise a new day, because most of the problems there aren't from the crops, were from the people that were there. I'm there, I would give him my personal number and I would make sure it wouldn't happen again, but again, this is dear to my heart and the memory of my nephew. Who was a victim of these opioids, and this is the only solution, Pfizer and all the big pharma companies are not the solution. It is the pot, it is the CBD and the THC, you know, and it's the way I see forward, so I'm not here, I don't need this business. But I'm doing it out of principle, you know, that, that's who I am, and, uh, I thank you for your time and that's about it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Are you a representative of the company, enjoy?
I mean, I work for the company, yes.
Did you have something to say or?
I mean, I just have the pictures he was talking about.
I, I just have a question, you said they're in pots, are they in pots?
They're in, where is, what is the picture, we got the picture.
First page, follow the team.
The other question I have, the, in the garage, it looks like what I would call garbage bags. They are in the garage and they're not a violation, because they're in a building. But they certainly look terrible from the road when I see them, so these are, these are bags, correct?
It's six mil, it's, well, they're impotent, it's six mil, if you know six mil, it's not, it's, 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 we can order night, okay?
I just want to say.
But what I had also, I've been there since February, it's not coming on August, I mean, so, he was like a big teddy bear. We've, can anybody say there's been a problem since February?
Oh, I don't have a.
Right, so I understand.
The other question I have is, um, there should have been another violation written on the side of your fence. For whatever reason, public enforcement did not like that violation, so, that should have been written as well, but you cannot have. I don't know, roofing material that's at least eight or ten feet high as a front yard fence, it does. It's eight, okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, front yards are four feet, right?
Correct. But it's not the front, it's in the back.
What's in the back?
It comes off the side of the house.
It's in front of the house, right?
So you want us to move exactly?
Is that the front of the house?
No, it's the sides, it's not at the front of the house.
So when you look at the house from the road, what is that, side of the house?
When you're looking.
So do you have all sides, you have no front?
Means.
Are you honestly, I gotta have your name, you gotta step on.
My name is Christopher Sullivan.
That's what we are, what I'm saying is, where's the front of the house, when I pull up on the road and I look at the house, that's the front of the.
So you want like the entrance gates to be four feet, is that what you're saying?
The fencing in front.
Yes.
That can't be eight feet nine, and it certainly can't be galvanized roofing materials.
So what would you like it to be, wood?
Well, you'll have to speak to the code enforcement, and they'll tell you what's the sentence.
We'll be willing to comply with any of that, but we also wanna make our neighbors happy, and I, and I'm guaranteeing, I would give you my word, that there would be no problem. I would give you my personal phone number, if there is a problem, you call me and I will deal with it.
Okay.
I wanna be a bad neighbor, that's not who I am, that's not the way I was raised.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, anybody else have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, so we'll, we'll open up the public, it was never closed, we'll just carry on from last month, I didn't wanna give him a chance to just. I don't know, rectify some of the accusations, you have any, uh, if anybody would like to speak, step up. Larry, keep it short, I know you.
Yeah.
Let us know your name.
My name is Lawrence Card, you've heard from me, I'm the next door neighbor, I hear all these, you know, these guys have been alright, you know, and. With the house and the consideration and stuff, you know, but they're not farming. But I haven't heard how he's gonna take care of the lights for Shea Stadium, you know, if you do go ahead and give him a variance, which I can't see why they should get it. And I'd like to know too, if the ground is so wet, why, I, I don't know, these chemicals getting put into it. I mean, we've seen buckets and buckets of chemicals go in there, it's on my thing, we got the videos of it. Of them offloading them and running them into the backyard, we've asked, I don't know how many times. For the five different types of buckets of chemicals we've seen being ducked into the big water tanks up there and the fumes coming up like this. And like he says, water goes downhill, so, who knows, I know if it was pooping it, I wouldn't wanna be drinking it if I was my neighbor, you know? Because that water's running out of their yard, it's gotta overfill the bags if you got heavy rain and stuff, if they're in bags or pots, whatever they're saying, they're in. And another thing is, I don't know how many times I've also asked for it, I've never seen a proper license for this place where they claim they have it. I've never seen the proper insurance certificate for it, in case we all do get sick, I'd like to know who's gonna pay for this, you know? And, I mean, you can go on and on and on, if, if you give them a variance, it's gonna go right back to the same old stuff, I believe. But, you know, I mean, you know, a new broom always sweeps for you.
Anybody else?
It's the truth.
No, 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 I don't know.
It's called your.
State your name, say what you gotta say, and, and address the board, everybody, please, not the applicant.
Okay, I have nothing to, my name is Tia Kiesler, I have stage renal disease. I'm at the down end of their, their property. So the stuff that they're using is going down, even though that we have well water. The well water ha, it's gotta go somewhere, I'm too sick, I have a sixteen-year-old son, I have a husband, I wanna live a little longer. I'm on dialysis, I do that every day, I don't think, and. What I was told, as when I was younger, the gateway to it is the marijuana, first it's marijuana. Then it'll be hash, then it'll be something else, then it'll be something else. And if it was your family, your kids, your family, your wife. A, a sick child, a sick mother, would you want that around yours? Just think of that, that's, that's. And coming to the neighbors, I never had anybody knock on my door, ever. So I don't know why all of a sudden, if it was any one of us, okay, any one of us locals, we would have been fined, stopped. We would have done all, that would have been all of it for us. Now, everybody's getting away with so much stuff that there's no consequences, they'd rather pay the fine. Okay, because it's more money to make this stuff, it's easier to pay the fine. I just don't think it's right, I really don't. And it's, you know, it's not only just my kids, there are other kids in this neighborhood. And yes, the opiate, the opiate is, is high in this area, yes. But the cannabis also is a gateway. It starts with that, then people aren't happy with that, so then they try something else, and then they try something else. And then it goes into other things. So my opinion, I would say no. I don't want it around my son, I don't want it around me. Doing dialysis is, is very time consuming and very serious. I have to watch, I can't even drink my well water, because I'm so afraid. We do bottled water. I'm so afraid to use, I'm, I'm afraid to cook, cause I have to use bottled water. Because of the condition that I'm in. And I'm trying to get a kidney transplant, I'm on a kidney transplant list, trying to get a kidney. If they see anything in the system, I'm gonna be denied. Now how am I supposed to tell them that, oh, I don't know what it is, when it's running off their farm? So, I just wish that you would just take that into consideration. I really would, please and thank you.
Thank you. Point one in further, if you got a letter, just. I guess some of the letters were mailed out with addresses and not names. So if you did receive a letter and you hear from the public, and you just kinda let us know that you received a letter, if you're. So you received a letter?
Received the letter with no.
I'm just asking if you received a letter, that's the only thing I'm asking. So, just raise your hand, so I know. I don't need to see the letter, I just need to know how many people received the letter. Cause there was some kind of, uh, um, yeah, and the letter also, which was kinda. It just seems like. If you need to speak, you can come up, I just wanted to know we got the letter.
Okay.
If, if you did get it, so, um, if you wanna speak, you can come up and say your name for the record.
My name is Dean Kiesler, I'm Gia Kiesler's husband. And just a couple of factors. First, that letter, it seemed very unprofessional to begin with. No letterhead, it didn't come with who sent it, anything else. So I opened it up, and it looked, yeah, it kind of looks like a little paragraph on the very top page and three quarters of the letter for them. You know, to me, that's kind of a little unprofessional. Not only, not only that, it seemed like a lot of the work that's being done there is at night.
You gotta address the.
And there is, there is. There is traffic, there's, there's more traffic than unusual, people do speed up and down that road, and it just seems like. It's been a little more with, with this farm opening up and everything else. And again, we've never gotten a knock on our door, or anything else like that, and I'm real concerned for my wife, and my son is only sixteen, he's very impressionable. You know, he's in that stage of his life where, you know, to him, everything is cool. Let me try it, it's cool, let me try it, and I don't wanna go there. And I just want a safe neighborhood like we've had. And that, that's really all I gotta say. But thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak, please step up?
Thomas, Anzalow, two seventy-five, Burnt Ridge Road, I got one question for the board. I thought we were all supposed to receive a certified letter before this even started. That's my question.
Well, the, the people that raised their hand, did they get certified letters?
That's what I'm asking, did they, or? Yes, certified, current receipt?
Yeah, well, I think it has to just be certified. We, we do have. No, you have the certified.
It's not everyone, it's just people.
Just the people that raised their hand.
Uh, even half the road. Well, thank you.
It's only supposed to be within three hundred feet of.
He's given a list that the, that the code enforcement, the board gets the red. So the receipts weren't written out, but I, we accepted it, having them anyway, the office. We wanna get this done, if anybody else from the public?
Wayne Garber, one ninety-eight, Burnt Ridge Road, uh, you'll be there thirty-eight years, you've had a problem like this. Uh, I did not get a letter, I'm seventy-five paces, quarter to corner, property, property. What type of security do they have? This is supposedly a very valuable crop type thing, what type is for security other than sense? Uh, do you have, they're gonna be guards, dogs, whatever. One question. You work at night, I mean, I've worked on farms, big farms, and the only work you do at night is milk and the cows. You die into the property, question for the lawyer. If I have to notify people that I'm selling my house, that there's a pot farm near me, within three hundred feet. How much of that do you die on my property, and are you gonna lower my assessments come spring?
Well, not an assessor, not a blind appraiser, so neither of those questions are for a lawyer.
Okay, but that's for the board then. If you're gonna okay this, you're lowering the property of all the houses near this thing. And it's, are you gonna lower my taxes?
Well, that you go to, gotta go to the tax assessment.
Though I will be there next spring.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Deborah Kelly, two sixteen, Burnt Ridge Road. Uh, we did receive a certified letter yesterday, which was well outside the guidelines for the notifications, but the meeting was happening anyway. Um, I know somebody already mentioned insurance and liability for future environmental issues or health concerns. That's a big concern for a lot of us, for all of us in the neighborhood. I have concerns related to some of the code here for, if I can find it. Home occupation, I don't know if you would consider this a home occupation, I would, they're running a business out of a home. Three ten dash five dot six, home occupation. Number one, a home occupation shall be conducted only within the dwelling unit or an accessory building. Number two, appearance, in no way shall the appearance of the residential structure or the premises be altered by a home occupation. Number five, outdoor displaying and storage, here shall be no outside operations, storage or display of products, materials, goods, supplies, or equipment associated with the home occupation. Number nine A, a home occupation, that's, this is adverse impacts. A home occupation shall not be permitted to produce any offensive noise, lighting, vibration, smoke, electrical interference, dust, odors, or heat. Any noise, vibration, electrical interference, dust, odors, or heat detectable beyond the property line shall constitute a violation of the terms of this provision. And nine B, home occupations, which will constitute a fire hazard to neighboring residences, will adversely affect neighboring property values, or will constitute a nuisance, or otherwise be detrimental to the neighbors because of excessive traffic, excessive noise, odors, or other circumstances shall not be approved. I hope you guys, please, double check your code and take that into consideration when you're making your decision. Three ten dash five dot twenty, prohibited uses, any use that is of such a nature as to be detrimental to neighboring properties by reason of emission of odor, dust, refuse matter, garbage, smoke, vibration, gas, noise, attraction of vermin and wildlife, or any other factor that is dangerous to the health and safety of the area or the community, is prohibited. Any use which does not comply with the performance standards set forth in three ten dash five dot nineteen is prohibited. And then three ten dash five dot nineteen, one item in there, under A five. This is in regard to the tanks, liquid or solid wastes, no discharge shall be permitted at any point into any private sewage disposal system, or street, or into the ground of any, sorry, I should have brought my glasses. Of any materials in such a way or of such nature or temperature as can contaminate any water supply, or otherwise cause the emission of dangerous or objectional elements, except in accord with standards approved by the State Department of Health or New York State D E C. You guys are already aware of the fence issue, I don't have to bring that up, but just as a note, three ten dash five dot five. Section J, no material intended for temporary use shall be erected as a permanent fence. I don't know if, you know, roofing is considered temporary, but that's not really a fence if it's roofing. Again, he said that he was not the cause of the problems last year, but he also stood here and told you that he grew there last year. So either he is or he isn't, he can't be both. If he grew, then he's the cause of the problem. Not him personally, I'm not attacking him personally. The operation that is occurring there, if it is the same people, which he just told you it was, then they were the same people who caused the problems last year. The bags, I'm not a gardener or a farmer, I don't know about the bags that they're growing their stuff in, but I find it hard to believe that plants grow well without any kind of soil drainage. So if they're in plastic bags, and they water them and fertilize them, and it sits in this bag in the heat, in the sun, and molders away, I don't know, I wouldn't think, my plants don't grow well if I don't have drainage for my garden, my tomatoes and whatever. So I can't believe the plants are growing well without any sort of drainage. If it is draining, it's draining onto permeable tarp, which is going into the ground. He told you himself tonight about all the runoff, so that's getting into running water, which is supposed to be a no-no according to the D E C. So that's where our concern about contaminating water supplies comes from. I have a couple concerns, if, if the variance is not approved, number one, what if they decide to grow anyway? Is the town prepared to take some kind of action to put a stop to it? And number two, if they don't grow there, we don't want it to become a processing or packaging facility either, because that's what brought the refrigerator truck last year, and caused all the noise. We just, we want an end to this. It's not an appropriate location, you guys have driven there, maybe not all of you, but whoever has, I think you see that it's really not where something like that belongs, on a tiny little three acre piece of property. I know I heard mention of fines previously at other meetings. I don't know the amounts, I thought I heard fifteen hundred dollars a day or something. Somebody told me last year that they suggested to them that they move the refrigerator truck. Like, a few miles down the road, they'll park it in Shopright Parking Lot or something, where people wouldn't have to hear a run, and people wouldn't complain so much. And again, this is not a conversation I had directly, this is what somebody told us. The answer to that was, well, we can't do that, there's over five million dollars worth of pot in that truck. So fifteen hundred dollars a day, one rough a duck's back, you guys gotta do something a little bit other than that, or they're just gonna be over there doing whatever they want anyway. They'll ignore you. Please give us your thorough consideration before you vote. Just remember, if you allow this here, you're setting a very bad precedent, and before long it'll be in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Are, are those fines set by the state?
No, it's local zoning, or local code.
Some of the fines are, there, there's a cap, they're, they're saying. I know some of them won't, but those are, that's local.
The fifteen hundred a day, yes, it's two fifty for the first, uh, initial violation and fifteen hundred today, they're after.
Anybody else from the public? Why close it? Nope. Well, we'll close the public portion. Anybody from the board have comments, please? You don't have to step up and say your name, but we do, if you have something to say, if you have something to say.
Yeah, I got a few things to say.
Okay, so I didn't hear, uh, many complaints about, uh, uh, what you're growing.
Uh, I commend you for your education, uh, I commend you for your upbringing, which has, neither of those things have anything to do with the issue at all. What I hear is a, a, a. A lot of neighbors on a very quiet street complaining about noise and lights and smell. So that's the issue to me.
I, to be back off of that, really just examining the code, which is meant to help ensure a harmonious, healthy community here in Fallsburg. The purpose of setting a minimum acreage requirement for agricultural activities is to ensure that this situation doesn't happen. That neighbors, um, neighbors aren't worried about the safety of their water, they're not worried about noises, smells, and things that are natural, and actually wonderful for farms. But that's why farms should take place in this town on ten acres or more. So from just a zoning point of view, this is a pretty significant ask to reduce the acreage of a farm and a farm oper, operation from ten acres to three acres. And so that's where I'm coming from.
Who else?
I agree as well, um, that it's a, you know, the ten acres are for a reason, and you can certainly, the ag district is pretty big. So you can find property that is the ten acre.
It is a three hundred percent increase. So, that's how I feel. Okay, that's it, um. I, I know there was some. Uh, I know there was some violations from previous meeting, right? Also, the side yard fencing is six, I believe.
And rear end of food, some of your fencing as well.
Yeah, rear was a, a six, the shoulder eight, and front is four. You know, O C M requires eight. Old town rule requires four and six.
Which means that you have to come with a, what about that?
Right, you do live in the town, you do live in the town of Fall. So maybe it wasn't a good idea, then you decided to do that there to begin with. I, I'm not saying, I'm just saying. And I believe you didn't really do the due diligence in this, when you bought this piece of property. Cause if I remember last year, uh, two weeks ago, you said something about, you thought you were in the town of Liberty, and this ain't Liberty. Least the property.
Supposed to mail and get trashed in Liberty. And they're from the city, they didn't know.
I get it. Alright, so, uh, I know there was some violations, right? Anyway, I think there were, I think I mentioned a few rest month. Okay, so we'll go down and, uh, we'll go down with questions. Okay, whether the, whether an undesirable. Whether the, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood detriment to nearby properties, so start with you first. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood detriment to nearby properties.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, I also say yes. Can the benefit sought be achieved by the applicant? Be achieved by another method other than an area variance? We'll start with you, Abby, the whole night long. Let me read it again. Can it be achieved by the applicant?
No.
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 I agree, but also say no. Whether the requested area variance is substantial.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I say yes as well? Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect, impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
Um, yes.
Yes, I agree, yes. Was the alleged difficulty self-created? Which shall be relevant, but not necessarily preclude granting the variance.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I also agree, yes. So the negative deck, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Motion, is it not?
Deny.
I'd also vote to deny. Where your variance has been denied. Where your variance has been denied to me. Do I have to do a lead aid here on this one? Lead aid to see, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay. One more favor? Okay, do I have a motion to?
Motion.
Hold this adjourn. Yeah, please adjourn.